For October the thirteenth. A four role call, Mrs. Gray.
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mr. McClellan?
Here.
Mr. Melcher?
Here.
Mr. Wall?
Here.
Mrs. Heim?
Here.
Mr. Carl?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Gray. Onto A five, revision of the agenda, Mr. Trout, do we have any revisions?
Yes, we do this evening, Mr. Allen, we have one, I would like to add C eight, a field trip request to the consent agenda, adding the Huntington North High School Show Choir request to participate in the Indiana All-State Show Choir Competition, October sixteenth through eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at Plainfield High School Indianapolis. The reason for this is, is that they were just awarded this honor within the last week, and so that's why it didn't make your board packet, so I'm just requesting that to be added to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Trout, I'll entertain a motion in reference to addition to the agenda.
It's E eight, not C eight, but other than that, I will make a motion to approve as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Wall.
Is what eight?
E.
Edward eight?
Edward.
Not C eight. Alright, sorry.
Ms. Heim's helped me.
And is there a second? Thank you, Mr. McClellan, any comments or discussion before we vote? Let's vote on adding this to our agenda. Motion passes seven zero, the addition to the agenda is added. Moving on to B one, public comment, anyone wishing to speak with the board can step forward. I have no one signed up to speak. Dr. Daggett, would you like to jump up here? God bless you. No one coming forward, we'll move on to C one, retirement of Director of Elementary Education.
Go ahead.
I'd like to read a, a letter dated October second. "I am writing to formally announce my retirement from Huntington County Community Schools effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. After forty-six years in education, including thirty-four years of proudly serving the students, families, and staff of Huntington County Community Schools as a teacher and administrator, I have made the decision to retire and begin the next chapter of my life. It has been a privilege and honor to be a part of this district, to work alongside so many dedicated professionals who share a passion for educating every student every day. I'm especially grateful for the opportunities to contribute to the growth and success of our students, and to be part of a professional learning community that values learning and collaboration. I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to the School Board of Trustees, Superintendent John Trout, and the entire school community for making my career so meaningful and rewarding. The experiences and relationships I have built here will always hold a special place in my heart. As I prepare to begin this next chapter of life, please know that my commitment to the mission of Huntington County Community Schools remains steadfast. I will do everything I can to ensure smooth transition and continue the success of our district. Thank you for the opportunity to serve this community for more than three decades. It has truly been the privilege of a lifetime."
You know, I'd just add that Jay, thank you, it's been a privilege and an honor, I mean that, it really has been. Not only you an incredible professional, but the life that you breathe into this organization every day is unbelievable, and so for us, and for me personally, I am just incredibly, incredibly grateful for you. You know, I've shared this story with you before, I knew Jay a long time before our opportunity to work here, and I consider working with Jay truly one of the highlights of my career. To think that he and I get to work, well, I don't know how he feels about me, but I should probably say, for me to have the opportunity to work with Jay has been just, just one of the highlights of my career, and I mean that, Jay, you are the consummate professional, and you have made such a difference with our students and staff and our entire community for years to go. When I knew Jay before this, Kathy and I built a house specifically in Jay's school, where Jay's school boundaries were, because we wanted the girls to have Jay for a principal, and we, we have not, we were not disappointed as, as a family, and it's awesome. Was just down to visit the kids just a couple of weekends ago, and there was their first grade picture of their class with Jay on the refrigerator. So that's what kind of impact this man has made on this community for, I mean decades here, is that you think somebody in their thirties still has their picture up with Mr. Peters from first grade, it tells you something, so to say, Jay, thank you, you, it's, you're not going to be replaced. We can fill the position, but nobody's going to replace you like, like Jay Peters, so thank you, I mean that, thank you.
I, I'd add something, but I'm afraid I wouldn't be able to talk very long. You mean a lot to a lot of people. We've been incredibly fortunate, and will probably bother the devil out of you, but congratulations, so, so well done.
Jay, congratulations, as a colleague and a friend, I've been so blessed, you were principal for my grandchildren, it was just the best experience. Your demeanor as a principal, you balance your deep compassion for families and kids along with your sense of humor, which your staff adored and adored you for. Congratulations, friend.
Thank you.
They haven't voted yet, Jay. No, I don't think you can, I don't, yeah, you could, but he's not going to come to work on July the first.
I don't think he's going to put up with it.
Could I just say a word, John? I never thought in my wildest dreams that I would ever be able to have a chance to come back to the district that hired me to retire. I did my student teaching with Gary Mast at Lancaster Elementary School. Gary happened to leave and go to East Allen to be a counselor, and Bob Trout saw something in me that I did not see in myself, and he hired me as a fifth grade teacher at Lancaster Elementary School, and I got to see, and he modeled for me as a young teacher what leadership looks like, what it sounds like and what it feels like, and every day for the last forty-six years, I've tried to imitate that, wherever I've gone, whatever I've done, I've tried to imitate that on what Bob Trout showed me, so I'm indebted to both Gary and to Bob Trout for starting my career, and then for you as a board that brought me back in twenty nineteen. I thought I was going to retire from Four Wing Community Schools, and you gave me the opportunity to come back, and I so appreciate and so grateful for that opportunity. To John, we've been friends forever, went to Leadership Academy together for two years to be on and to work with him, to be a Director of Elementary Education in his cabinet, it has truly been a highlight, so thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Jay. I'll reluctantly take a motion.
It's with reluctance that I make the motion to accept the retirement of Mr. Peters, and with heartfelt thank you for all thirty-four years that you spent here, and we truly appreciate you, and as John has mentioned, it'll be big shoes to fill, so.
Thank you, Mr. Wall, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. McClellan, any further comments or discussion? Hearing none, we will vote on the motion.
I was going to mention, because I know he's done it to Gary, that just keep your phone on.
Motion passes seven zero. Alright, back to our agenda, moving on to D one, Norwell Community Schools and Huntington North Communities, County Communities, Huntington County Community Schools, MOU for NCS Student Participation.
Yes, Tiffany Drummond is here with us this evening to share some incredible news with you, and so Tiffany, we'll turn it over to you, so thank you.
Thank you, I'm here to review the MOU between Huntington Schools and Norwell Schools. I'm really excited, this year we've welcomed nine students from Norwell to participate in career and technical education programs at both Huntington North and the Learning Center. They're in four different programs, so we welcome them here for biomed and radio and TV, and then across the street for construction and fire and rescue. What's really exciting about this is they're actually bussing their students to us, so there's a bus that comes, drops them off at Huntington North, then takes them to the Learning Center, and then reverses to pick them up, so that's for their safety that they get here and back well, and it's been going really, really well. They have kind of seamlessly integrated, you wouldn't know they were a normal student, they just come indoor one like everybody else and they go to class, so it's been a really fun and exciting opportunity for us. The MOU is very much a working document, this is what we started with, but we're taking notes, so we'll tweak that as we go, and next year it'll look a little different, but all in all, we've had a pretty smooth start, so are there any questions about the agreement or how the logistics of it works?
My only question is, there's fractions obviously of students involved here, so we get a total count of how many students come from Norwell, and that multiplies by the fraction, and that gives us an addition to our ADM?
Correct, so the way that it works, like we report them as a conducting school for like their CT enrollment, so they get their reimbursements, they get their ADM, but then we bill them for three sevenths of their ADM, so for the part that they're here, we bill them, so we do bring in a little bit of income for the district by doing this.
Does it, Mr. Trout, do you know, or maybe Mrs. Drummond, do you know that if it qualifies for to be counted as our ADM, or they're just giving us a check?
No.
So it never really changes?
Yeah, it, we could not count those students to our ADM, but what we do is we use a seven period day to understand, they're basically over here three periods a day, so they write, they compensate us for three sevenths of their ADM is how that works. I also want to say a significant thank you to Norwell Administration too, I would be remiss, Mr. Springer, who's the superintendent, has been tremendous to work with through this, and so this is a great partnership going both ways, and I do, I do mean that, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trout, I'll entertain a motion, I'll reference this request.
Motion to approve the Norwell Community Schools and Huntington County Community Schools Memorandum of Understanding for Norwell Community Students, Norwell Community Schools Students Participation Twenty-five, Twenty-six.
Easy for you to say. Thank you, Mr. Melcher, can I take a second? Thank you, Mr. McClellan, any further comments or discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McClellan, good point.
I have a question, on the, are we going to look in the future into trying to maybe organize our fall break and spring break with theirs, or?
It's tricky, right, that, that involves calendar committees for both districts, but yes, I mean, that's definitely going to be our biggest challenge, is the calendars not lining up. They were very gracious in that they sent their students to us on our first day, for us, like especially like construction, we do our OSHA certification before they go on site, their kids actually started with our kids so that they could start their certifications right away, and we appreciate that, but yeah, the calendars are definitely the trickiest part, and we've kind of had some tentative plans about what the fall breaks and spring breaks will look like, but ideally, yeah, we would have a more similar calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Carl, anything further from Mrs. Drummond before we vote? Let's vote on the motion. Motion passes seven zero, moving on to the consent agenda, items E one through eight, Mr. Trout.
Yes, want to draw your attention to a couple of items there, first of all, under E five is the JRTC Classified Employee Agreements. We work with the US Army every year in determining rates for our JRTC leaders, and so we have now all that information from the government, and that's why you're getting those agreements here this evening, that, that is no small feat to figure that, and so to the business team, and I know Mrs. Smith helped behind the scenes with that, I say thank you because Tyler and I had at least three different meetings on this, trying to navigate through what they're sending us, when they're sending us, how they're sending us the funds to support this program, so I just wanted you to see that. Also, donations wise this time, we're up to a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars worth of donations and grants, and, and I, I want to highlight just a few of these for you, Horseman Elementary School is requesting permission to accept three donations to be used to support the robotics program, that's from, the first donation's a hundred dollars from the Black Rock Asphalt Taylor Drummond, the second donation's a hundred dollars from Samuel and Ashley Kaufman, and the third donation is thirty dollars from the Dan Lines and Dirt Danielle Lyons, the second one is to Roanoke Elementary School, permission to accept donations for socks and clothing valued at a hundred and twenty dollars from the Paper Artisans Club and the Union Thrifty Club led by Rita McCabe, so thank you to them. The Learning Center is requesting permission to accept a donation, a hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-two cents from Jergens Do-It Center to be used to purchase gloves for the fire and rescue, so that's very kind of them also. The fourth one is the Special Edu, or Special Education Department's requesting permission to accept the Indiana Robokind Grant in the amount of a hundred and one thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars from the Indiana Department of Education to be used for students with individualized education program. What that is, is that the state of Indiana actually came to see what we were doing with our kids with the one we have in our district, and we ended up going to get another one, so it's really making a significant difference with our students in those programs. And then lastly, we're requesting permission to accept our K through twelve Robotics Competition Grant in the amount of seventy thousand forty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents to be used for registrations, kits, supplies, as well as stipends for robotic mentors. Special thank you to Tyler Hasco for putting that all together for us to do that, and so you can see a real commitment just in this donation for this meeting to our robotics program, and so I'm just requesting your permission for E one through eight.
Thank you, Mr. Trout, before I take and, before I entertain any motions, would anyone like to remove anything from the consent agenda besides me? I am going to be pulling number four, the Personnel Report will be pulled, we'll vote on that separately.
Okay, and that does not take a second or anything, so one board member can do that, so, okay?
Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion for Consent Agenda E one through three and six to eight, I'm sorry, five to eight.
I'll make a motion to accept the Consent Agenda E one through three and E five through eight.
Thank you, Mr. Wall, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. McClellan, any comments or questions, maybe discussion before we vote? Hearing none, let's vote on the consent agenda, one to three and five to eight. Motion passes seven zero, and now I will entertain a motion for E four, the Personnel Report.
Make a motion to accept E four Personnel Report as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Wall, and a second. Thank you, Ms. Heim, any questions or comments? Let's vote on E four. Motion passes six, yes with one abstain, I would like to just say that I would, since it was a comprehensive list that we had in the E four, my son is actually one of those listed there as taking a position here at the School Corporation, I would have voted yes for everyone else, I wholly support everyone that's on that list, abstaining is a challenge sometimes, so. Alright, moving on, move on to F one, Adoption of the Twenty-twenty-six Budget Form for Resolution, Mrs. Smith.
Good evening. This is the third final step of a three-step process for the budget for each year, the first step what we do is we have our budget workshop and ask for permission to advertise at that board meeting, then the second one is hold a public hearing, which we did at the last board meeting, and this last board meeting is to have a full adoption of the budget, and this one piece is one of the items that are required for the budget adoption, and what you see up on your screen is what's called an ordinance of resolution for the appropriations and tax rates for next year's budget, twenty twenty-six, from January to December, and this requires the board to adopt this resolution, and then you'll see all the information on here from the adopted budgets, the tax levies, which are the property taxes, and then the tax rates, and these numbers have not changed from our prior two meetings from our advert- And these numbers have not changed from our prior two meetings from our advertised or our hearing. And then we would ask the board to adopt this resolution, and then each board member then signs this resolution. And then the secretary, of course, gets the pleasure of signing twice. They sign above and then they sign below attesting the signatures. So we would ask the board to approve this Form Four Resolution as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. I'll entertain a motion for this item.
Recommend approval of the 2026 Budget Form Four Resolution as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Melcher. Any questions or discussion before we vote?
Just to clarify, the tax rates that we have here are estimates, but they cannot go up. They can only go down from this form, correct? Thank you.
Yes, they take from this process, then we upload these into the Gateway website for the Department of Local Government Finance, and then they take these along with the rest of the school districts, counties, libraries, fire, all those, and they actually calculate the final tax rates and levies. And that's what we should know by December 31st, what that will be, the final numbers. But he is correct that when you advertise, that we are not able to go over those numbers, but the numbers after they're calculated can go below.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Any further questions before we vote? Let's vote on that motion. Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to F two, Adoption of the 2026 Capital Projects Plan.
Thank you. This capital projects plan is also the same one that was advertised on our website and the Gateway website. And then what's required this evening is to adopt that plan and sign the attached resolution for the capital projects plan for 2026. So I'd ask the board to approve the capital projects plan and sign off on the resolution as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. I'll entertain a motion, reference this item.
Recommend approval of the 2026 Capital Project Plan as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Melcher. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. We'll vote on the motion. Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to F three, Adoption of the 2026 Bus Replacement Plan.
Thank you. The 2026 Bus Replacement Plan process mimics the same thing that we have to do with the capital projects plan. So this too was advertised on the website, on our district's website, and also the Gateway website. And this is a replica of the same numbers that you've seen in the last two board meetings. So we would ask the board to approve the bus replacement plan and sign off on the resolution as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. I'll entertain a motion, reference this item.
You're all looking at me, so I'll continue. The thing, recommend approval of the 2026 Bus Replacement Plan as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Melcher. Any questions or discussion before we vote?
I know that's a multi-year plan, but we're only basically held to this year because we can adjust it in the future, correct?
Absolutely. Same thing with the capital projects plan.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Anything further? Let's vote on the motion. Motion passes seven zero. Onto F four, Approval Resolution to Reduce 2025 Budget Appropriations. Mrs. Smith?
Thank you. This resolution is a customary resolution that we bring to the board each year. During the draft budget process, when we received the 1782 notice from the state, during that process, if needed, this is a resolution stating that if we needed to reduce some of our existing appropriations that are in excess of what we need at year end to be able to fund the 2026 appropriations, then we are able to do so during that 1782 notice. We have not had to do this in the past here at Huntington or at a lot of districts, but this is a customary resolution that in case we're through that process and need to do that at that time, that this gives us that approval to do that.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. I'll entertain a motion, reference this item.
Recommend approval of the Resolution to Reduce the 2025 Budget Appropriations as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. And is there a second?
Second.
Why, Mr. Melcher, thank you. Any further comments or discussion? Hearing none. Let's vote on this item. Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to F five, Approval of Resolution to Transfer Funds from Education Fund to Operation Fund in 2026.
Thank you. Last but not least, this is a resolution that I'll remind the board and the community why we have to do this resolution. Back in 2019, they dissolved the old general fund. They dissolved the old capital projects fund, bus replacement fund, and transportation operations fund. So when they dissolve those, the old general fund used to have four buckets, four categories. They moved two of those categories into what you now know as the education fund. And the other two categories, along with the capital projects fund, transportation operating, and the bus replacement, all moved into what you know now as the operations fund. However, the tuition support that we get from the state that used to fund the old general fund, we still get all of that money coming into our education fund, even though two of those categories moved into the operations fund. So instead of the state dividing up that money, they decided we're still going to give the districts that full allotment directly into their education fund. But then districts can transfer up to 15% of those dollars to fund those two categories that were moved into the new operations fund. So this is a required resolution that districts have to do every year on an annual basis to allow those transfers to happen in that next year. So we would ask for the board's approval of this resolution as required by the state.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. I'll entertain a motion, reference this item.
Recommend approval of the Resolution to Transfer Funds from the Education Fund to the Operations Fund in 2026 as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Mr. Melcher?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Melcher. Any further discussion?
So I know that there's a cap. We can go above 15%, but then we get to put on a naughty list. But in the resolution itself, it does not have a cap in that. That's just to give us that flexibility, and we can choose up to and go over that if needed, correct?
Correct. And that cap is a suggested cap. It's not a required cap of the 15%. But if your district would go over the 15%, then you're put on this naughty list that's advertised to the rest of the state. So we here at Huntington usually do between a 12 and a 14%, so we're well below that 15%.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Any further questions? Hearing none. Let's vote on the motion.
Mrs. Smith, while they're voting, I just want to take this opportunity to tell you thank you. You have been a tremendous partner with us on a variety of levels and for several reasons. And board, if you remember back, a few years ago, when we brought Becky in and the work that she's done, it has been absolutely incredible. And so Becky, on behalf of the board and myself personally, I just want to say thank you. You are a great partner, and you have done tremendous work. So the impact of your work is, we're standing in it right now, to be quite frank with you. And so thank you. I mean that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I would just reiterate, Mr. Trout says you have made our jobs a lot easier, so we appreciate you. Thank you.
Moving on to F six, Administrator Assistance and HCCSC Agreement.
Okay, you know that since about July, we have been running short with positions in the business office. And Becky and I were having this conversation later this afternoon about the challenges that we face in filling those positions with highly qualified people. The task in front of us is not insurmountable, but we have been working at this at a level I have never had to do in my career to find high-quality people to come in and support what we're doing in the business office. So what I'm asking for this evening is your approval with the Administrative Assistance and HCCSC Agreement. Please don't get confused by that. I contacted them to see if they had anyone out there who could support and help us. And lo and behold, they do, and not only someone who can help us, but someone who's tremendously qualified. And so the person that we'll, we're basically doing contracted services with administrative assistance for this person, if that makes sense. Karen Zecchia is going to be the one, if you approve it tonight, is going to be the one coming in as, starting on Wednesday. She'll be working with us three to four times a week, depending upon her schedule. With that, she'll be staying overnight in Huntington, and then she'll continue to work with us the next day. Karen was a field examiner for the Indiana State Board of Accounts for eight years, auditing an array of local government units and participating in special fraud investigations. She's five years as a Corporation Treasurer at North Newton School District and 24 years as Director of Business and Finance at North Newton School Corporation. Her wide-ranging responsibilities included all accounting and financial reports, budget development and implementation, revenue, receipts, expenditures, accounts payable, cash management, grant management, payroll, construction, human resources, and a variety of other things that she has done. She is, she's won a lot of awards, as you can see in your board packet there, including the 2016 IASBO School Business Official of the Year and the Region Four Business Official of the Year. Mrs. Smith and Dr. Sager vouch that she is going to be a tremendous help for our staff along the way. I would not be surprised that we are working with her for the majority of the rest of this school year. She says she would be willing to commit to that. Doesn't mean that we hopefully won't find a highly qualified CFO. As a matter of fact, I'm early encouraged with some of the work the last couple of weeks. And so just looking for your approval with this agreement with administrative assistance.
I'll entertain a motion, reference this item.
Motion to approve the agreement between Administrator Assistance and HCCSC as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wall.
I do have just a question, comment, I guess. What, how do you envision, what do you see this, how this works?
Yeah, we've been working with Dr. Sager and our business team. We have a rather extensive detailed plan put together. She is going to begin working in payroll. And so our immediate goal is to have her work with our new payroll specialist. So ultimately, Ms. Priest can move out of payroll and work in HR full-time. So that's step one. That's going to take us several weeks until we feel like our new payroll specialist is grounded. She can do it all on her own. It's not criticizing her in any way, shape, or form. But when you're cutting in the neighborhood of 850 checks every two weeks, it's a job. And so Karen's background will, she knows our software system. She knows the state processes. She understands everything that we should be doing. So Ms. Priest is going to work with her for pretty much the rest of this week and into next. And then Karen's going to work directly with our payroll specialist. From there, we'll evaluate what's next. She will eventually probably work in every department of our business team, depending upon when and who I bring in on staff within that. So we're starting with payroll.
Thank you, Mr. Trout. Any further questions for, Mr. Trout references? Hearing no further questions, let's vote on the motion. Motion passes seven zero. Onto Item G one, Lincoln Farm Ground Lease Agreement 2026.
Yes, our agreement with Mr. Collins Suchicki expired here this fall. It's my recommendation that we extend it one year. Since we no longer have the ground at Salomon, we're specifically talking about the ground at Lincoln Elementary School. It'd be my advice to you is not to go beyond a one-year agreement from here on out to allow yourselves all the flexibility that you may need in the future as we look at other possibilities for our district. So Mr. Wiley has reviewed this agreement and has signed off on that. And so I'm recommending your approval of this agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Trout. I'll entertain a motion, reference this agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve the G one Lincoln Farm Ground Lease Agreement for 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. McClellan. Any questions or discussion before we vote? Hearing none. Let's vote on this motion. Motion passes seven zero. Move on to Item H one, Volume Thirty-seven, Number Two, Policies and Administrative Guideline Updates.
Yes, this is, we're going to go back to a first reading. There was a concern brought up at the last meeting about administrative guidelines matching school board policies. I want to say a special thank you to Mrs. Gray, who gave you a pretty extensive rationale and details from behind the scenes in an email about this. And so this evening, what I'm doing is, is so many of these are just identical to what you had two weeks ago, but we felt like since we made some updates here, it would just be best if we did a first reading again. And so that's what we're doing. As I've always said, if you have any questions, comments, concerns, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. We'll discuss those in detail. If you have suggestions for improvement, please let me know also. But this is just the first reading tonight, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Trout. I'd also like to thank Mr. Carl for recognizing that we were a little short last time and needed to re-get this thing redone. So thank you, Mrs. Gray as well. Any questions, comments before we move on? And move on to Item I one, Items of Discussion by Board Members. Anything anybody like to add? I will just bring it back to everybody that we can't forget that Mr. Peters is leaving. And I know we've said a lot of cool stuff about you, but really, this is going to be a board meeting I'm never going to forget. And mean a lot to a lot of people, so thank you so much for everything you've done. Anything anybody else wants to add? You don't have to talk about him anymore either. Hearing none, I'll move on to J one, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. A second? Thank you, Mrs. Heim. All those in favor?